Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for July 8th. The time is 7:30. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Temblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilman Muir?
Here.
Counselor Warbach? Councilman Soltis? Counselor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grabstein?
I am here. Can I please get a motion to excuse Counselor Warbach and Councilman Soltis? They did give notice.
Your Honor, so moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say nope. Motion carries. They are excused. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Mayor Pro Temblis. I invite you to stand if you would like.
All right. So since we had the Fourth of July, I think it's a great opportunity to remember and remind ourselves that the decisions that we make today are only possible because of the work done by all the generations before us. And so I want to read a quote from Lin-Manuel Miranda from the musical Hamilton. Legacy, what is a legacy? It's planting seeds in a garden you never get to see. I wrote some notes at the beginning of a song. Someone will sing for me. America, you great unfinished symphony, you sent for me. You let me make a difference, a place where even orphan immigrants can leave their fingerprints and rise up. Let us remember that the actions that we take today will inspire future generations, and let us be thankful and remember the work of all of the generations that have come before us in this city and in this country to give us the opportunity to meet here tonight. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I believe we have an addition to accept the recommendation of external counsel. I don't have the case with me if our city attorney can read it off, but I would happily make the motion to add that to the consent agenda 6A.
All right.
Your Honor, the motion would be to include the matter of Darniel Williams versus Madison Heights.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of adding this to the consent agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Yes, all against say nope. All right, motion carries. That is added. Are there any other additions or deletions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentation. First up is from the Director of Public Services, the Priority Waste presentation.
Your Honor, sorry to interrupt. We have a limit on the items on the consent agenda. It's capped, I believe, at a certain number, so I would ask that it be added to the regular agenda.
Oh, okay. So we will add it to report. We'll call it 9A. Is that all right, Mr. Temblis?
Yeah, Your Honor, we could just move it off. I'll just request it moved off the consent agenda, and then we're good. We can just deal with it there.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other additions or deletions? None. So from the Director of Public Services, the Priority Waste presentation. We have a representative from Priority Waste here today, Dan Vinyah.
Good evening, everyone. Dan Vinyah with Priority Waste. I first want to just acknowledge and apologize for my absence in your previous meeting. I did my best to get here. Another board meeting ran hour and 15 minutes on just our item. So coming here was important to me, and I just wanted to open with that statement to start. So Dan with Priority. I've been with the company for five and a half years now. We started six years ago. This acquisition of the GFL assets and employees was an expedited process, and I appreciate all of you, as well as Sean, who I've worked with, and I met with you, Ms. Manager, to go through some of the details, how this would work, what it would look like. And I knew it was not going to be an easy task. I knew that there was going to be some hiccups, I'll call them, throughout the service. But knowing that you have a great team behind you and the administration, that's going to push us to be better, I think, is a great combination. And what we saw in the first week, again, was somewhat to be expected, some nuances that we weren't privy to that don't lie in the white and black of a contract. We saw some things that may not have been definitively spelled out. But what I have to give credit to with operations is they didn't quit. They asked a lot of questions. Sean was a great leader behind them, and anything that we needed, I could reach out to him with a question, a concern, or just an honest statement. Talking with him today, he seemed to feel it was in a much better place, getting fewer and fewer calls. We're getting a very limited amount of calls from your community members. Not to say that we're perfect, but just to say that it's going off pretty well. One thing that will happen over the course of the next 90 to 120 days is the transition of the fleet to incorporate our technology. It's the camera systems and GPS trackers. And what that will do is give transparency to the service that was previously not available. So a lot of times, and I'll use myself as an example, a young Dan was walking to Wilkerson and Warren to go to my elementary school, and I was told to take the trash out on Monday morning before I started my walk. I'd forget, and the trash or recycling or compost driver would go by, and it wasn't out. And my parents would call to say it was missed, when really it was my fault. And there's a lot of things that happen in life that cause those things to come up. But our cameras allow us to use that opportunity of the contact to us to inform a resident of what's happening, why it happened, was it out, was it not out, and just use it as an education piece. Because if you can't tell them definitively what we saw, how are we going to improve not only ourselves, but also educate the residents on proper procedure? In the gray areas of what's acceptable and what's not, that's where I see the greatest benefit, because some people think you can throw out an item. Let's say it's oil-based paint, which you cannot, but latex paint dried out, you can. With the cameras, we can zoom in and identify why the driver may have tagged it, if the tag was still on there, maybe didn't give enough detail. We can tell them on the phone, this is what we saw. So residents are going to get quicker resolutions, better education, and free up their time and give resources to take care of that material responsibly. The best part about the GPS tracker is we can give ourselves a live scorecard at the early part of the day, middle part of the day, and the end of the day as a spot check, so we can see if we missed a street. And again, it comes back to human error. Driver, let's say, has a capacity of their truck full, they have to go to their processing or the landfill site, and they come back and they think they started at the end of one road, but actually they started at the beginning of the next one. So they'll miss an area because of, again, human error. Having that GPS tracker, having that technology piece allows them to have the support, which we have in our office, a controlled environment. Sean and his team came and did a quick tour of it. That's welcoming. It's youthful, because this industry is also known for its age and stagnation, to not be willing to change. So we've embraced that, knowing that the younger the individuals that come in, the more ideas they're bringing to the table, the more benefits that they can show to myself, who, I'm no spry chicken, but I'm also not a 30-year-waste guy. I came in five years ago, not in the waste industry. So we're trying to bring this core of people to give fresh ideas, so that youthful energy in the office pushes me, our CEO, and our executive team to do things differently, because the status quo is not just acceptable, we shouldn't just keep doing it because it's working, let's improve upon it. So I'm happy to say that we've been here for now six days, this being our sixth. The calls to our office have been minimum from your community. The ones that have come in have been addressed. There's, I'm sure, going to be some tomorrow. We'll get those as well. And it's working with you and your fine residents every day that we're appreciative of, and I'll leave it up to any of you that may have any questions. I do ramble, so I didn't want to go too long.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel and comments? Ms. Wright?
First question, what is the number that residents can call if they have issues?
Absolutely. We have two phone numbers. One's a local, 586. It's 586-228-1200. Or our toll-free, which is 855-927-8365. Both of them go to the same receptionist desks.
And is that a person or is that a phone?
It's a little bit of a combination of the two. We live-answer our calls. There is a queue system thereafter. So how our system works is live-answer receptionist puts the call for Madison Heights into a queue, which is for our Madison Heights support staff in our office. What that person does is they're the ones watching the trucks as they're cookie-crum through the community. So if a resident calls in at 9:45 in the morning and says, "My trash was missed," we can look at the route live, and they can tell them if we were there yet, if it was in fact a miss. Or, this is a big one, where we pick up the carted or bagged waste that's at the curb, and we come back for the bulk, so they think that we only took, that we missed the bulk item. We may just be coming back for it because of the style of truck that's servicing that area. So it's a two-way system that we want to keep the 1950s feeling of in-person, or the personal aspect of customer service, while utilizing the 2024 technology that's available to us, always knowing that we're going to enhance that.
I have a follow-up question. I personally experienced with GFL, my trash being missed despite being out, despite being out on time, despite being on the curb and five feet from our recycling. And we used to have a gentleman in our community, and I think a lot of you guys know him. His name is escaping me.
Doug Jones.
Doug Jones. So you can see his reputation precedes him. Will we have a Doug Jones in our community moving forward?
There are support staff operationally around, and not specifically Madison Heights, but in the surrounding communities. Again, what, I'm not going to assume what he was doing. I'll base it off of what I know from GFL's operation. They would have a guy or a gal in a pickup truck following around various trucks as they're doing the work, so they're following the truck and a truck to make sure that truck does the work that that truck's supposed to do, which is kind of an antiquated, old thought, right? And if we're talking about sustainability and reducing carbon footprint, you're now just duplicating actions and emissions, right? So the LDC, the logistic driver coordinator, that's the sports staff, they're the ones watching the trucks in the field to kind of know where they're at. Now, that's, again, coming in with GPS trackers and the cameras. We have lead drivers that are in the community, one in which that's familiar, used to lead services in and around Madison Heights. He's the dispatch. He's kind of working with the team in the field, with a territory manager that's above him. His name is Jerry Vitale. He's phenomenal, has been, has worked in this city before with GFL, so very familiar with the operational expectancies on a day-to-day basis. So yes, you will. That gentleman, if, I don't know if he is with us, or if he applied, if he chose to go somewhere else, if you're still in contact with him, he's still interested, we're more than willing to talk to any of those individuals that maybe during the transition decide to leave GFL and seek other things.
Can I just have my one final comment?
Go ahead.
I'm on the roll here. I would just like to recommend that if you don't have Doug Jones, or you got to seek him out, or someone like him out, because I understand that those guys on those trucks, you know, you know more and better than we all do. They're on the time crunch, so if they miss a house, it's because they got to go. And so I'd just like to ask that you guys keep someone like Doug Jones around to help, because I tell you, it's very frustrating to me after coming home from a long day of work, and actually serving on city council, and my trash is still full, and the neighbors are looking at me like, what are we doing here? So I think you guys, it would suit us all well to have someone like Doug around.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so...
You're going to need to wait till public comment. Public comment.
Yeah, and I'm sure he'll stick around and listen during public comments, which comes up very quickly. But what I'm really curious about, I think the transition, this is a great fresh start and everything. I was a little upset, as I think for most residents, that we weren't notified before, like, the press release and everything came out. So we were kind of caught off guard, and I think a lot of residents were worried, because, you know, as you mentioned, there's a lot of history, some of it good, some of it bad, but there's a lot of history with GFL. There's a lot of expectations of what needs to happen, and there is a standard process that people go through. Right now, it's not pick up the phone and call. The majority of the times that I see those types of complaints are lodged through social media. And a representative of GFL, as was mentioned, was on a lot of our city pages, was connecting with residents, and directly taking those things. So they didn't make the official system, but it was rectified in real time. And so for me, you know, I just want to ensure, I think, two things. Number one, the story that you gave was a story where we need the cameras to be able to educate a resident who did something wrong. I think the reverse is also true, and frankly, is something that I would have led with, where, you know, we've had multiple, like, trash cans being broken and things, and historically, a resident would just simply message through social media and get those types of things resolved. If we're going to change it, we're going to need to make sure that everybody's aware of this phone number, and, you know, there has to be some PR there. And I think, two, I know we're in longer-term discussions, and I certainly want to leave that to the professionals on both sides of the negotiations, but I would say that the thing that our residents have come to expect is the extra service in what you define as the gray area. And so I just want, I want to be clear, you know, myself as a resident, and then all of our residents sitting here in the gallery or watching this live, anything you can say to reassure them that the same level of service and the same expectation of service will continue despite it now being a new company.
Yeah, I'll start with number two first and just say, because it's easy. Yes, as the services were performed prior, they'll continue to be performed through priority, the commitments, the terms and conditions of the contract, the way that it was done, the gray areas, yes. I mean, again, everything within reason. If it's an eviction, move out, then it's a discussion we, of course, will work with Sean on how that was handled before, what's the proper processes and all that. But yeah, as the general, 99.9% of the experience a resident received before on the positive side, that's what we will continue to provide for your residents, is that, you know, again, we, part of priority in how we got so large so quickly is that we backed up the word in which we said. I don't come up to council or to board meetings or to various village meetings to say, yeah, we're going to be great, and then we're kicked out of the community the next contract negotiation. And that's because what I'm saying is the honest truth, that we're going to hold up our end of the bargain, knowing there's extenuating circumstances where we just work out those ideas and details together. With the other part, you're correct. I should have said that we also use this transparency for when we make a mistake, because we will and we do. It's a very humanistic service. There's humans on both sides of it. It's not automated. It's not driving its own self and picking up the trash or the recycling other ways. So of course, we will make a mistake. And again, what I love about the cameras is it takes away the he-said, she-said, and provides evidence. If we are at fault, we're at fault. We fix it. We get it right. If we're not, it's the same conversation, educational, not holding them as a got-you moment, but just saying, hey, we missed, we did not miss it. We'll come back this time, but please, in the future, get the material out on time, right? So you're right. I love the cameras, because it points the fingers at us when it's accountable to us and allows us to be better, allows us to, maybe it's an opportunity to train our employees on something that they had not received yet, or reiterate something that they had not heard in a while. So absolutely.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for sticking around to hear public comments.
Of course.
All right, any other questions or comments from counsel?
Just one.
One more?
One final one. Can you commit to coming back to counsel two to four times, like, annually to see us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the record, my garbage is picked up on Thursday, and because of the Fourth of July, it was picked up on Friday. It was picked up pretty early in the morning, so whatever that means to anybody. But I do want to echo what has been said here and what I have heard from residents, and that is that Doug Jones, he would drive around, and I know that I saw him out. I saw, I would just be driving down the street, and he's out in his pickup, and he's picking up somebody's garbage, because for whatever reason, it was missed. And that is something that Madison Heights has grown to get used to and expect. So whatever your cameras are doing, that's fine, but we don't want the personal touch as well. And I'm also going to request that the city does put the phone number that you've given up on our website, so that if people do have an issue, they can call. So with that, I guess that is it for our questions. Thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate it. And next up, we have from the CD Director, the Special Approval PSP 24-03, the Wash Point Car Wash. This is modification to vacuums. Mrs. Marsh, is that you? Yeah.
The applicant property owner, Steve Gunn, requests a modification to the previously approved special approval application for Wash Point Car Wash located at 28245 John R. The applicant owns and operates the car wash and has revised their request to increase the number of exterior vacuum spaces from four to eight. The property is zoned B3 general business. The applicant intends to remove their existing vacuums and install a total of nine Vacutec vacuums, which will be accessible via eight parking spaces. The additional vacuums will allow patrons on the end to vacuum either side of their vehicle. Based on the revised orientation of the proposed vacuuming spots, two-way vehicle circulation will now be possible. The special approval was originally heard by counsel on May the 28th, when the city council voted to postpone action on the requested special land use modification to allow the applicant time to address concerns related to noise, trash control and dumpster location, and traffic circulation. For noise, the applicant has provided a noise study showing that the sound level meter readings from various distances of the turbine generator. Per the study, at a distance of 20 feet, the turbines produce a sound level of approximately 54 decibels. Based on the chart provided by the Federal Aviation Administration, this is a similar sound produced by a conversation in a living room. At a distance of 30 feet, this is a similar sound, this is 38 decibels, similar to that of background noise in a laboratory. Trash control and dumpster location. Per the applicant, the modified vacuums include trash canisters that restrict the ability to place obscure larger items inside. The applicant claims that there will be no increase in the trash as a result of these new vacuums. While the site does feature a dumpster enclosure and dumpster pad in the northwest corner, approved as part of the original site plan, the dumpster itself has been moved to an unapproved area in the southwest corner of the site, adjacent to the public alley. Per Section 10.510B8, all dumpsters shall be located within an eight-inch-thick dumpster enclosure concrete pad and completely screened from view. A new dumpster area should be brought into conformance as part of this special approval process. Traffic circulation. Based on the 90-degree orientation of the vacuuming parking spots, two-way circulation is proposed adjacent to the vacuums. The previous submittal depicted angular parking spaces, which would have required patrons to proceed through the car wash after utilizing the vacuums. Per the applicant, the 90-degree orientation allows applicants to exit the site after using the vacuums. Staff recommended that the applicant remove their original submittal, remove from their original submittal, the northernmost vacuum parking space due to the proximity to pay kiosk, and brought the total spaces back down to eight, nine total vacuums, as originally proposed and as advertised in the public notice. If city council moves to approve the requested modifications to the special approval use, staff recommends including the following conditions for approval relating directly to the site layout and operations of the proposed vacuums in accordance with Section 10.2014K to fulfill the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the intent of the B3 zoning district. Number one, provide a dumpster pad and screening enclosure, either masonry or landscaping or a combination for the dumpster, in coordination with the Community and Economic Development Department. Alternatively, move the dumpster back to the originally approved dumpster pad. Vacuums shall be turned off no later than 8:00 PM, consistent with the closure of the auto wash tunnel. And motors and mechanical equipment for all outdoor vacuums shall be enclosed within the auto wash building. Details of such equipment shall be provided on the formal building plans when submitted. After the public hearing and discussion, city council may take action on the requested modified special approval, but any motion should include concise findings based on special approval review standards and criteria in Section 10.2014 per Section 10.2013. City council may also postpone action on the special approval request to allow verification or submittal of additional materials.
All right, thank you. So at this point, I am going to open, reopen, the public hearing. So I'm going to give everybody the opportunity, who wishes to speak specifically about the car wash, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak at the podium for three minutes. So if anyone would like to speak, please, the podium.
I'm ready.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'll hurry.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this specifically?
Yeah, I need a minute.
Yeah, that's fine. You can come back. That's fine. If you would like to speak specifically on this, please. On this? No? This is specifically to the car wash? Yeah.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Robert Stefani, and I am an attorney that represents the petitioner here. I'm not going to belabor this, since it's been before the council before, I'm going to keep my comments very brief and directed to what the conditions were that would support approval. First, the issue of the dumpster is really a non-issue. We will do what is, what the city believes is the best for us, for the city, to bring it in compliance. So that really is a non-issue. We'll meet with the city planner. themselves are going to be run solely during the time the car wash is open. Currently, that, that isn't the case. So, the issue in number two about the, the timing is, is again, a non-issue, at least for purposes of our discussion. The whole purpose of doing this is item number three, is we want to move the equipment inside. It's aesthetically, will look much better around John R., because you won't have those canisters. The look that's going to be presented, and I do have the Vacutec representative with us here tonight, but the look that'll be there will be consistent with the other car washes in the area, specifically El Car Wash and the new Tommy's that's going in down, down the road. So, we're at, you know, we're basically going to look to appear the same as the other car washes for consistency. It will greatly improve the look of the site. And the issue of the noise, I think, is important too. We've attached a current decibel lemon test readings to the letter we submitted, I submitted to council. And in fact, if you look at the readings that have been taken using the current equipment, together with having radios playing, which at some point that issue came up, the noise level at the back property line is still only 60 decibels. That's with all four canister backs running and car radio noise out in front. That's actually quieter than the traffic on John R. itself. So, the, the point of that is, we're moving the equipment inside. You won't hear the equipment over the sound of the wash tunnel. Whereas now, you're hearing those canisters due to the tone of them outside, outside the tunnel. It's a different noise. Here, it's actually going to make more of a symbiotic sounding, because you're just going to hear, hear the tunnel. And then lastly, it's, it's one of fairness. All the, the new car washes that are being approved in, in the city have this type of vacuum system. Patrons prefer it. It's easier for them to get in and out, to vacuum both sides of their car. The other, the other car washes have it, so from a fairness standpoint, we're just looking to effectively be on the same playing field as the other car washes, which has become an incredibly competitive business, as I'm sure you know. So, we need to be on the same playing field as the, the newer car washes that are going in. And that takes me to my final point. Wash Point's been here in the community for 20 years. They were the first car wash to be established in Madison Heights. They've been supporters of the local community. They support baseball teams and the like, and they've been a good citizen to this community. They've been a good taxpayer. They have not had any ordinance violations in 20 years.
Thank you. That, sorry, that was a three-minute timer.
Okay.
So, they, they've been a good, they've been a good business and partner. I appreciate that. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Left off where, sorry, where he left off. I am Steve Gunn. I am the owner of the business. I have been part of the community for 20 years. As all of you know, you've probably been through my car wash at one point or another, that I always try to keep my places looking top-notch all the time. It's good business, you know, and being part of good business is being competitive. So, I don't mind competition, but I want competition at a level playing field, you know? I need to be able to compete with my competitors at the same price points as them, at the same services that they offer to their customers, just so that I could survive, essentially. So, that's what I'm asking for you to hear today, is just to be able to compete. On that end too, Rob brought up all the positives that this is for. This is not a negative. It's just, it's all positive. It's quieter. It's cleaner. It's, it's more appealing. It has better traffic flow. You can go on and on, you know, about how much just, it's going to be an asset to the community. As a businessman, I also know that I have to constantly be upgrading, you know, and evolving, you know, with business. So, this is the new involvement, you know, in our industry. So, electric cars are becoming the new kind of norm now, you know? The old gasoline engine is kind of going away. The canister vacuums are going away. This is the new, modern way that, you know, we vacuum out cars nowadays. So, I just thank you for consideration on this.
If I may just add, if we have any questions for the Vacutec representative, we do have to bail.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kevin. I'm at 28306 Prush Street, Madison Heights. I've been there over 30 years. 24-hour businesses, we don't need them right near the residential area. Very disappointed. We already got the animal hospital open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Just even if the least you do, just cancel the 24-hour vacuums right now. They always have to update. We're going to go through this every couple of years. This is nonsense. These people have been updating since the time began. But anyways, I'll just read my letter, because I sent it in. I'm not in favor of the expansion of the car wash. The city will have plenty of car wash vacuums when Jax opens. There is nothing positive. I heard something, everything was positive. There's nothing positive about putting four more vacuums near our residences. The residents don't want this giant industrial vacuum, period. Put the industrial vacuum in the industrial areas. And I'm looking just at the mayor. Okay. I understand that the current four vacuums exhausts their dirty exhaust air to the front of the building, right near the people using them. I'm sure they don't like it. I understand that bothers their customers. So, they probably want, they probably, you know, does the car wash plan on aiming the dirty vacuum exhaust air directly towards the residences? Keep the smelly vacuum exhaust air in front of the building. That's my idea. The residents will suffer even worse when the car wash modifies their equipment or the equipment gets old. And they will, and they're, and they're not going to maintain it, and you guys will all be gone. Probably move up to city, county commissioner or something. I don't know. But, and I don't want the car wash garbage to double or increase any amount. It's nonsense that the, the garbage isn't going to increase. You double the amount of cars, you double the amount of vacuums. I don't have a lawyer here to talk another 30, 30 minutes. I wish I could hire somebody, $500, and have two people talk, you know, whatever. It's a tough life. The car washes currently has garbage issues. I mean, just another day, yesterday, I sent a picture of someone backing a pickup truck to the car wash garbage dumpster and dumping construction debris or something in there. I don't know if it was authorized, not authorized, but it's nonsense. We, even if it was authorized, we don't need off-site garbage coming to this commercial property, just period. I don't, it could have been terrible, terrible garbage. Could have been chemicals. I don't even know what it was, but it doesn't belong there. They, they generate enough garbage by themselves. I remember last year, I reported, they were taking their garbage over to the animal hospital dumpster, and I sent you guys pictures. What's up with that? I would never take my garbage to my neighbor and put it in the, my neighbor's dumpster. I don't know what's going on. They should go to the original site plans. I hope you're not going to approve.
You almost done?
Yeah. Well, maybe I could get more, another minute or something.
I, I think, I think, I, I know, Mr. Trabuki, that you have written and you've called, and I've spoken to you about the garbage situation. I know that is a big concern of yours.
Can I?
Yeah. One more point.
Can you just add that letter that I sent to have read here in the record?
Yes. Yes, we have. You basically just read it, but we do have a copy of your letter.
But thank you, Matt, or Matt, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, we will, we will include the entire letter in, in the, in the minutes. All right? All right. And, uh, meeting is still open if anyone wishes to speak specifically on the car wash. Can you move closer to the mic?
I'm not an attorney. I don't live directly around this car wash, but I do know, they've been here for 20 years. They're honest people. It's a family business, and they have to, they have to be competitive. We, very large corporation. Car washes have been approved in our building, and I, it's my understanding that Steve is going to abide by all of those things you said needed to be done. And I hope that this could get approved.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak specifically on the car wash?
Toya Erin, 2959 Sixth Tower Street. When the car washes were first brought to our attention, I was a city member on council, and I approved for the other car washes to come into the city. And at that time, I stated to Wash Point that there's enough competition and enough money out here for everyone, and their business should not suffer because of the competition. So, not being able to allow them to modify their business to be in competitive with the other businesses would be a bad idea. We know that those modern car washes that are coming along, they have several different bays, washers, they have all the perks and chains and chimerlings. And as a 20-year resident here in the city, in order not to place hardship among them, we should allow that car wash to be able to modify to be and be in competition with those coming here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Ferris, 30041 Winthrop Drive. You're fine. I still got behind you. I've been a resident of Madison Heights my entire life. 20 years ago, we bought our house, and it was the same time Wash Point was being built. I was on the site when it was going up. The entire goal the entire time is to provide the best car wash that they can. You know, if you see the one on Dequinder and the upgrades that they made when they bought that one, they did an amazing job with that. I want to support somebody that I can talk to the owner, that I can see as a real person. You know, Steve and Wash Point are allowing us to host a fundraiser for the Senior All Night Party class of 2026. You know, I, I don't have a contact that can give me that at a different car wash, or who is willing to jump into the community for something when someone asks. We have to allow them to be competitive. The last thing our city needs is another open area. Do we want another failed business right in that John R. area? Because you can go buy. I mean, nothing's at McDonald's, nothing's at the liquor store. So, is our goal to make them not competitive? Because all that that's going to do is hurt our community, and I don't think that that's anything that, you know, we want to do. They are a good, they are a good citizen, and that's what we need in this city. You know, Priority Ways talked about how, you know, their new technology is going to make things better. And so, let's let Wash Point have the opportunity to use newer technology to make it better.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak specifically on the car wash? And everybody will get the opportunity.
Hi, my name is Dan Bokeed. I am the Vacutec, and I am the provider of the equipment for Steve. And just a, a couple of points I'd like to make. Number one-
Sorry, can you just lift the microphone up a little bit, please? Thank you.
Better.
Yes.
One point I'd like to make is on the filtration, and the, and the, any smells that might come of this new vacuum. There is a filtration canister that's attached to the motor, the turbine, that will be hidden in the back room of the tunnel, out of sight, out of view. And that's where any smells or any dirty air really will collect. This turbine will vent typically through the roof, sometimes through the wall. Depends on the best practice for the building. There's air makeup in the, in the room that will be noted on our final plans for the city to look at and that type of thing. One thing that wasn't really brought up is energy savings. Currently, Steve has four canister vacuums that are 20 to 30 amp draw per. My vacuum producer is going to be 34 amps, full load. So, it also runs on a VFD drive. So, what that does is it lowers the pressure until demand asks for more. There's a sensor that asks for more pressure when there's more people vacuuming. So, if you want to be green, this is the way to go.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Real quick. It's a single vacuum with eight parking spaces. Think of your furnace in your home. You have one furnace, and you have ducts in your house. This is in reverse of that. The ducts are outside, suction into one motor. So, just understand, it's just one motor. That's all it is.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak specifically on this item of the car wash?
Maybe you should go to the podium.
You, you will get a turn. You will get a turn. You're fine.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hall. I'm a teacher in a residing area, but I am a resident here in Madison Heights, 28043 Hampton. I have to say, I really appreciate the small business. I know I'm young in here, but I've come to really appreciate small business and being from where I'm from. I originally came to Metro Detroit. I lived in Ferndale starting in 2017 with my husband, and Wash Point was actually the first car wash I went to. I'm very clean when it comes to my car, and I don't like to have a dirty car. So, I am there weekly, and I have the membership and I have all the things. So, this is like a big deal to me. And when I went through the car wash, and they handed me the letter saying, please come to the council meeting, I was like, okay, that's a classy move to like, get people on board and understand this is a very important deal to our city. It also is like a personal story. When we moved, well, I guess still in Ferndale, once COVID hit, we, Wash Point was the only place I could go. I had a newborn baby, and we couldn't do anything, and a, a two-year-old, and we couldn't do anything but go through the car wash. And so, that place was a very popular place for our family. So, as someone who frequents there often, I would really appreciate the new vacuums. I've seen the other areas. I've seen when I go back home with the new systems and how nice here, and it cleans it up, and I know the flow will be a lot better. Right now, the flow is a pain in the butt. So, that would be really appreciated. And, um, let me make sure I hit my points. I wasn't planning on talking, so, okay. I think I hit, my only follow-up question to you, sir, I don't know your name, sorry. You were just talking about the trash, bringing it over to the animal hospital or things like that. I'm just curious, have you only went to the council, or did you talk to the owner about it and kind of address some of these issues with him instead of just going to the council? If you did, no, I'm a seventh-grade teacher, so I'm all about conflict resolution. So, that's my only question there, is if that was addressed with him. And he seems like a great guy. I've seen him there often, and if he would be willing to, you know, accommodate the city as he's trying to now, and make it a better place for, for Madison Heights and just improve the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Ma'am, this is specifically on the car wash?
Yes, it is.
Okay. If you want to just move the mic down again, if you can reach it.
I thought you'd give me a stool.
Yeah. There we go. All right.
Okay. My name is Betty McAvoy. My address is 1835 Windermere, which is probably at least two miles from here. And as we all know, as business owners, you have to keep things updated. And it sounds to me, that's what they're asking for. And that's the only car wash I have used for a number of years. I've been to others. They don't do the work that they should. And as far as the garbage issue and people using dumpsters that shouldn't be, that's not just a car wash issue. That's an issue with anybody that has a dumpster. And I'd like to see that this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak specifically about the car wash?
Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. I'm, you're at the corner of John R. and Catherine. I'm straight down the road from you. I never used a car wash until I used one car wash. I love your car wash. I hope they approve this. The only thing is, can you have those guys brush the back of the SUVs better, because my cameras do-
All right. Is there anyone else who still, Mr. Trabuki, you've already had your chance, and we've got your letter read in. Okay? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak specifically about the car wash? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Do we have anything else? For this? Okay.
This is from a Thomas Dunston. He said, "Attention, commissioners, new and free vacant at Wash Point Car Wash seemed like a good idea to me. I'd like to get a wash and then go into Leo's for lunch. I think spending money in your city is, for you, a good thing. Your thoughtful consideration is requested."
All right. Thank you. So, at this point, we are closing the, the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion from council. Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to kick off discussion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to kick off discussion that we approve. Special approval, PSP 2403, with the conditions noted in our packet.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. I have a, I have a few questions of staff. So I don't know if it makes sense for a planner to come up. I know you're comfortable back there, Matt, but I'd love to have you come up if you give me a little bit of leeway. I do have a few questions. I'd love to keep the floor. Now, we heard about the dumpster being a non-issue, and that the applicant will do what council wants. Has it been moved to where it was originally approved, or is it still non-conforming adjacent to the property line?
I think you got, to my knowledge, it's still adjacent to the property line out of the approved dumpster. The applicant can correct me if I'm wrong. It was moved back there years ago, and it is shielded by a chain link fence with a mesh screening. So if it is intended to stay there, our recommendation is that area has to be brought into compliance with their ordinance, which would involve a concrete pad and some type of screening enclosure.
Okay. And is it correct that the original placement that was decided by our predecessors, I think two decades ago, is further away from the property line where there are residential neighbors?
It is, I'd have to look at the site plan. It's very similarly placed in terms of the distance to the rear property line, which directly abuts residential. It's just on the other side of the site.
Okay. And non-conforming right now with the pad, right?
Non-conforming with, in regards to, it's not shown on the approved site.
Okay. My, my second question was related to the noise at the property line. The applicant stated 60 decibels at the property line. I know we don't have an exact ordinance for this, but the work that we did on the outdoor entertainment ordinance set a decibel level at the property line for if like a band or an external speaker were playing at a restaurant. Do you know, is that at or below 60 decibels? Like what?
That's a good, that's a good question. I don't know the exact number we set it to. I should, as the planner. I do know that the chart that we included in this, this staff report was similar to the chart we had discussed as part of that conversation. And the analogies for the sound level, be it the library or the living room, that was kind of the, the same level we set it as for the outdoor dining. So I would suggest, I would say it's probably very close to what we settled on for that outdoor dining discussion.
Okay. And then the discrepancy that we identified at the last meeting between the vacuums that they had, were using today versus the number that was approved. I think it was, they're using four today, and only tw- or two were actually approved by council records. Did we verify that?
We went through the records to find that special, the original special approval had two. Then the zoning board of appeals, which had two, they had to go through the ZBA for original approval because it's an outdoor vacuuming equipment, which our old ordinance didn't allow. They acknowledged three vacuums. At some point, a fourth was approved. However, it's, it's kind of moot at this point. The point of the special approval is to bring the site into compliance. So if eight are approved today, that's what the number would be. It's possible, again, there was some type of handshake agreement that wasn't recorded in our permitting system, similar to the dumpster. I unfortunately can't verify that just because we have no record of it. But today is the opportunity to set the, the number of vacuums that would be allowable on the site.
Okay. Thank you. And then, last question back to, back to the, the trash can. Where, where would the staff like to see it? You know, it has to be brought up to code, but would, would staff prefer to have it where it is today, or where it was originally proposed?
It's, in staff's opinion, we go off of the zoning ordinance. If it meets the zoning ordinance requirements, being it's accessible, this would be, the proposed location would be accessible via a public alley off of the rear. The zoning ordinance says it has to be in the rear yard. It can't be in the front yard. So regardless of if it's on the north side or the south side, it's going to have to unfortunately be close to a residential property line, or else they would have to go to the ZBA to seek a variance to get a dumpster in the front yard, which we also don't want to see. So it's kind of a catch 22. From staff's opinion, if it meets the ordinance requirements, it has a dumpster pad with a concrete, I think a six or an eight-inch concrete pad, and a screening method so that it's not terribly visible from the residential, staff is comfortable with those, with that, if, as long as we get a site plan for it.
Okay. And let me ask the city attorney. My original motion, the condition that was there, required the trash receptacle to be brought up to what code is, correct?
The condition that staff recommended is to provide a dumpster pad and screening enclosure, either masonry wall or landscaping, or a combination for the dumpster in coordination with the community and economic development department. Alternatively, they could move the dumpster back to the originally approved dumpster pad and enclosure. So my, my understanding of the intent of that condition is there's going to be a site plan submitted to the community development for, for approval as part of this.
Yeah.
But I would further indicate to council that by making a motion to, to approve, council is making specific findings that this comes under our prior zoning ordinance. It was in a B3 general business zoning district, that the proposed modification to increase the number of vacuums is consistent with the intent of B3 zoning. It's compatible with principal uses permitted by right in the old B3 zoning district, that the subject site is immediately adjacent to properties improved with zone for residential and commercial uses. It's located across the street from auto-oriented uses and commercial zoning. The proposed modifications is compatible with adjacent land uses. It's consistent with the site's commercial future land use. The proposed modifications are designed as the location, size, intensity, layout, and periods of operation to eliminate possible nuisances. And based upon those findings, council's moving to approve the special approval with the conditions that staff has recommended, one being to increase the number as originally proposed, total number of vacuum spaces to eight, total number of vacuums to nine. We talked about the dumpster condition. To address Mr. Tribouki's point, these vacuums are to be turned off in the same hours that the, that the car wash is open, so that means no later than 8:00 PM, consistent with the closure of the entire business at that time. Motors and mechanical equipment for outdoor vacuums are enclosed within the building, and the details will be provided in formal building plans if council approves. Is that the intent of the motion?
Yes. Two, two additional questions, if you, if you so willing, Your Honor. The applicant said when we postponed this, that they were going to shut their existing vacuums off at 8:00 PM as a show of good faith. Did that happen during the time, from the last time we postponed it?
Staff is not aware. I defer to the applicant on that.
Just thumbs up?
No, actually, we didn't because of the way the vacuums are designed. The only way to turn them off is with a, like a main circuit breaker, which we didn't feel comfortable of our employees actually getting into a motor control center to turn off the power to those vacuums. They just don't have the, because there's high voltage in there, so-
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Gunn, sorry. If you're going to give an answer, you should probably be at the podium so we've recorded. No, that's okay. I thought it was going to be quick.
Sorry about that. Yeah, we did look into it, but like I said, the vacuums are hardwired through like a 30-amp circuit breaker in a motor control center. So I don't know if you're familiar with a motor control center. It's basically the whole thing that operates the power to the business. So that has to be opened with like a special key from inside there, then you can flip breaker. But even though it is hand-friendly, I just don't feel comfortable with one of our employees, at the end of the day, flipping a breaker to four individual vacuums at the time. So, so we didn't do that at the time.
Okay, so now I have a question then. With the new vacuum system, they need to be turned off at, by eight?
Correct.
Who will be doing that?
That's a good question, actually. I'm sure Dan can probably let us know on how exactly it's operating. I'm assuming with a new installation, it would probably be on a timer.
Okay. We do want people to be safe, and if it's a safety concern, why you haven't done it now with the old system. But with the new system, they need to be turned off by eight.
There's a number of ways you can do this. Number one, we provide a, they call it a start-stop button that can be remotely located in the manager's office or anywhere on the property. And once you push that button, shuts the system off. You don't have to go into a motor control center or anything like that. Another way to do it with your DRB system, I think, you can turn it on and off with your tunnel controller. So that's another way. And then there's a disconnect that you can just push shut, and that'll shut everything off to the motor, so it can't run.
Okay, so-
There's a number of ways to do this.
Okay, so it will be, it will be off by 8:00 with the new system?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. In a safe manner.
May I elaborate on that?
Sure.
Our Roseville location, we installed basically the exact same vacuum system, and we put an astronomical timer that automatically shuts off at eight, no matter what. It just, boom, 7:30, it turns on. Any lights or anything we had connected to that as well would also turn on and off without any intervention from anybody. I also looked in the OSHA for the, turning off the vacuums, and it was very gray area on whether or not an employee could reach into an electrical box. So if there's a gray area there, I don't want any part of it. So my apologies for not having those turned off, but I didn't feel it was safe. So the timer that we have at Roseville, I'm assuming we would adopt the same, with the same electrician that we used. Everything will be set up. It will turn off-
Automatic.
Automatically, no matter what, and it'll take no intervention, so our staff can't forget to turn it off.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wright, you had a question?
I just kind of had a follow-up question. So there is a plan in place to have it automatically turned off, because the gentleman mentioned like three options to do it, but he didn't say which one you guys were going to do until he mentioned Roseville. So I just want to confirm, you guys do have a definitive plan in place that you're working on?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, our Roseville site's been completely fine with the timer. And the nice thing is, by using a timer, is it does take the human error out of it. So if an employee forgets to turn off the vacuums at night, and then they leave the building, they would be running all night. Where this takes that human error out, come 7:30 or 8:00 at night, they just turn off. They're done for the evening. So.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from, yes, please?
So a couple of thoughts. I also had the question about, did you do the good, you know, faith of turning them off at 8:00, like we discussed? So thank you for answering that. Just a couple of curiosity questions. All of this equipment's inside the building, right? It's not going to be any addition to the building. And I certainly understand that that is going to make the noise level much better. I get that. And then I think the biggest complaint we had on the vacuum is being used at 12:00 in the night, 1:00 in the morning. So if we're going to make sure they're turned off at eight, I think the noise level is in pretty good shape. I also agree with the young lady who mentioned that, you know, dumping in dumpsters is a real problem. Being a, a nonprofit owner and, and has a dumpster, it's fill every time they go to put a garbage bag in it. So we had to install cameras and put signs up that you are being watched. So please park your car so I can't see your license plate, or I am going to report it. Helped a little bit, but any thoughts that you could be able to put cameras if that was illegal dumping? Maybe you should consider putting cameras to, to try and control that. That's the only thing we found that helps, because- Just curiosity, some of the community service stuff, can you elaborate a little bit on that? And, and how long have you been supporting like the baseball and some other areas that you fundraisers, I think, were mentioned, and just elaborate that on a little bit?
Yeah, part of the business, I always, you know, is to be philanthropic. You know, we actually created a, with the Children's Foundation, a thing called Entrepreneurs for Kids, which we've been running for six years now, in partnership with another group downtown called Fate. We do a lot with them. Local stuff with the community, you know, we've, I got a drawer that's literally three feet tall with a bunch of pictures of all the kids, you know, from sponsoring the Little League teams. Every Christmas, we give the police department, you know, a big stack of $20 gift cards that they can either hand out to, you know, they're the police chief, we give them, that they can hand out to either their, you know, people that work for them, or they give them out to citizens, you know, as like kind of just a, you know, charitable thing during that time of year. Just recently, I know with the firefighter who passed away last year, I'm drawing a blank on his name right now, we were a huge supporter of that. I think we were actually the platinum supporter for that. Trying to think what else. Anybody that comes up to us, Erin over here, we're helping them, you know, support their school charity event. You know-
Children's Hospital?
Yeah, I mentioned that. So, yeah. So I mean, it's, like I said, it's part of our business. You know, it's a business model. And we don't do that with just Madison Heights. We do that in East Point. We do that in Roseville. We do that in Clinton Township. You know, we do that in Troy. So, you know, like I said, that's always been part of our model.
One last point, Your Honor?
Please.
And it's gone.
It happens. It happens.
All right. Anyone else on-
Go ahead.
Anyone else on council have any questions or-
Your Honor?
Comments, please.
I just also want to clarify with staff that this is going to be a fully non-conforming use going forward with the new zoning, right? If it ever ceased to, stop operating as a car wash, it couldn't be a car wash again?
Correct. As part of the zoning rewrite, this was rezoned to a B2 or B3, which is our regional business district, is really pushed towards the interstate off-ramps. However, there is a clause in the new ordinance that does allow an expansion of an existing non-conforming use. So similar to the request here, that will go in front of the zoning board of appeals. So there are opportunities and options available to adapt the use to current times like they're doing here. However, if the use were to cease for, I think, 180 day or 90 days, it would lose its non-conforming status, and any use moving forward would have to meet the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. And a question for the attorney's office. I'm, I'm a little concerned still about the noise at the property level. I know we have a condition in there to ensure that the vacuums are enclosed, and we have the details that they provided us on the decibel levels. Would I be possible, or would it be possible for me to amend my motion to include the decibel level at the property line the same as our outdoor seating and entertainment threshold, just to ensure that it doesn't have a negative impact on the residents who live behind them?
I think you could do that.
Okay.
Do you want to include it? And, and before the council votes on the motion, you know, I made specific references to concise findings of fact that councils made relating to this based on all the paperwork that councils had. And I didn't ask support, Councilman Fleming, if he agrees with the motion, including the concise findings of fact based upon the special approval review criteria that's in the old ordinance.
I'd support the motion as it is presented right now.
Yeah, I, I would, if support would agree, I would amend, I'd include what you're mentioning, but I would also amend to include the decibel level threshold that we hold for outdoor seating and entertainment to be the same here, just to ensure that, you know, if there's an equipment malfunction or something, we have a mechanism to ensure that it gets shut off if it's too noisy for the residential neighbors behind.
I'll support the, the amendment.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, so the clerk and I were just looking this up. So external speakers, live entertainment may be permitted up to close of business and shall not exceed 65 decibels between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, 50 decibels between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM at the property line.
Okay, so that would be 65?
Yeah, 65 between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, 50 between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
Okay. Yeah, then I would amend to, to include 65 decibels at the property line to be consistent with that.
And this, this is until 11:00. This closes at-
Correct.
Eight-thirty, at eight. And then I think they open at 7:30. And so this starts at 7:00 AM. So they're well within the time of this.
Perfect. 65.
Mr. Fleming, are you okay with these?
I am. Yeah.
Okay.
Your Honor, one other comment for the public based upon the noise study provided. The noise study indicates that they're well within that, that requirement.
And, and it sounds like this will be quite- And, and it sounds like this will be quieter. So, it's, it sounds like this will be a quieter situation, so there should be less complaints about noise. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against, say nope. Motion carries, congratulations. All right. All right, thank you. And now we are going to open a meeting to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any items you would like. I ask that you keep it to three minutes, give your name, address affiliation with the city, and with that, floor's open. If you would like to speak, you, you can go up, yeah, you can go up now.
My name is Patricia Slag, and I live on Hampton. Before, because that company took over, GFL never picked, every other week, I was calling for them to come back and pick up my compost. My compost is in a container with the stickers on it. Tues, Thursday is my garbage day. Friday, you guys picked it up. The house next door to me on the north side, her compost was picked up. My compost is still sitting there. I hired a lawn company to cut my grass, and they put it in a container, and it's labeled, and it seems like every other week, I'm calling, and I know it's nothing to do with you because you just started, but I just don't know why the next-door neighbor got hers picked up and not mine. So, and I'm kind of upset about it.
I understand.
Because it's still sitting in the middle of the, well, not in the middle, it's on the curb. And I try to keep my house neat and clean, and up to code, and our taxes went up four percent, so I would like to have a quality of the city doing them job correctly. And I know it's nothing on you, because you just took over, but I, I don't know the answer. Do you want my address?
Yes. I would like, if you could please give him your address and a phone number, you don't need to make that public, but if you could provide that to him, yes, because I will be asking Priority Waste to take a look and figure out why this house is consistently being missed, and, you know, maybe, maybe it's being put in the wrong place, I don't know, but it should be a really simple fix. So, if Priority Waste can look into it.
I'm putting it out on the curb by the driveway. Not only that, I go out in there with a Kroger bag, and I pick up garbage that the truck doesn't throw all the way into the truck. Papers, straws, bottles, whatever.
Sure.
You know?
The new camera system will be able to pick this up. Yeah, please, please, offline, please give him your phone number and your address, and he will have someone look into it and get back to you. All right, thank you. Thank you for letting us know. All right. Anyone else wishes public comment? Yes, of course.
Martha Cover again, Edward Avenue. I'm going totally different subject. We're talking about, you guys are gonna be talking about pickleball courts at Rosie's Park. Do you read Facebook and see all the complaints about what happens at that park, that we're worried about putting in pickleball courts and not, like, maybe cameras or something to see what's really happening, help continue people feel safe in that park? Again, I get that this is a fad and everybody loves it, blah blah, but what happened to any of the sense, the sensory toy, or, I don't wanna say toys, sensory structures that were gonna be put in for the autistic kids? That's, where's that? Where is it? But we're gonna worry about pickleball courts. What about the picnic table so that a child in a wheelchair can go right up to the picnic table? Those aren't out there. The benches where they can fit right in, so they're, they're made to feel accepted and not pushed aside, but we're gonna worry about a pickleball court. Come on, guys, can we really look at what we've promised the residents? Almost every one of you has made at one time or another a promise to look into making sure that our special needs families have some help and support. This is an opportunity. Okay, if it's a grant that says, oh, you can only use it for a pickleball court, then please give it back and look for a grant that would do something for these families. That's what I think you should do.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak, any topic?
Hi, my name's Rachel Orbach. I work at John R. at Woodside, and I didn't realize that we were talking about pickleball tonight, but I was in the parks recently and realized most of our parks don't have water fountains, and if we're trying to make sure that our kids can play in them safely, stay safe while they're there, I feel like any, you know, if the opportunity for grants or money is there, maybe it can be part of the bandstand to make sure that all of our parks at least that have pavilions also have water fountains, because we had to go into the police station and use their drinking fountain in their lobby to be able to get water while we were hanging out. And I think they're in the buildings, and so if the building is locked, you just don't get water. Also, this is just relevant to separate issue. Hazel Park just decided to spend money closing their roads to make their streets prettier. Please don't do that. We'd rather be able to drive than have blue concrete. And so if that conversation ever comes up about beautifying the town, I'd, I'd rather be able to drive and not have traffic and make it to work on time than have a center street that is embossed in concrete. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Trabuki, two eight three zero six, Pro Street, Madison Heights, Michigan. Yes, just when you're trying to figure out where to put that dumpster, if you do put it on the other side, in the original one, remember, 'cause I know you haven't decided yet, that we get the garbage truck down the alley. If it's picked up on the other one, they come off of John R. So that's, you know, when it was originally put in, I, I know you guys weren't here, but that's what they promised us, they wouldn't be using the alley. And now they're using the alley, and we get their smelly garbage. But it's just something to think about, you know? Okay. And, oh, parking. The, I wish I could use the alley for parking. Now, I sent you the picture to the council that the animal hospital is using the alley for overflow parking, parking, they're parking right there. And my neighbor has a gate, a real nice gate, right, that goes to the alley, a wood gate, and I don't know what kind of agreement they have with the city and with the, with the animal hospital, that they block that gate, and maybe they have some kind of agreement. But, and it's a beautiful gate. Now, I have a gate, it's not that beautiful, but I, I don't want it to come down towards me, so that's why I'm worried about it. So if you could just clarify what, what kind of parking's allowed in the alley, and what kind of parking's not allowed in the alley? Because when I get a lot of people, I only have two parking spaces, two, on my driveway. I don't have a long driveway, I have a corner house. But if I could put my people in the alley and park, I'd love it. So if I could get a special permit to do that, it'd be great. So, yeah, I mean, and what else? Let me think. What I think? Yeah, I like the alley. Now, the city did say sometimes you divide up the alley. I wonder if that's, 'cause, you know, it'd be nice, instead of the animal hospital getting the whole alley, 'cause they seem to be taking it over with parking and everything, if we could actually divide it up and with the residents taking half, and the, the commercial properties taking half. And I'll hold my time for later, if I can get it back. Bye. Thank you.
Mr. Trabuki, you have thirty seconds left if you want to, if there's anything else you'd like to add? No, the, the time is now.
Oh, okay, no, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's anyone else who wishes to speak, any topic, three minutes? All right, I'm going to close comment, public comment, and we do have, we have a couple of emails.
First one is an email from Tony Black. "I wanted to reach out to you. I have lived in Madison Heights for over twenty years, and my hobby is playing pickleball. It is unfortunate that I must travel to Royal Oak or outside of Madison Heights to play. I will tell you, I picked this, picked this game up within the last five years, and what I love the most is seeing all different people getting out and exercising and playing a social game that is so much fun. I moved from Royal Oak to Madison Heights and loved playing sports and being competitive. I have raised a son who has gone through elementary school to high school in Madison Heights, and have, and have seen the activating decrease, activating decrease over the years at parks and playgrounds. Bringing pickleball to the city will be a win for your residents and the community. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any further questions." And then I have an email from a Gregory, Gregory Jones, this is, this is long. "On June sixth, twenty twenty-four, my home was raided by the Madison Heights Police Department in a further attempt to use racial intimidation to stop me from talking about racism my children and myself have suffered while living in Madison Heights. I was supposed to speak to the city council the following Monday about the police harassing me by letting a white neighbor openly break the law against myself and my children with harassment and racial slurs, using hate speech and openly calling me the N-word. Every time we made a complaint against this neighbor for breaking the law, the chief and his department covered for her illegal actions, always telling me I should move out of Madison Heights. This is what happened on June sixth, when the police stopped me on the street and then raided my home. One, I was told the police were removing my firearm from my home for red flag laws. I complied fully. Two, my service dogs were removed from my home and murdered by the police. Not one service dog, two were murdered, shot to death, with the police refusing to release the details to my lawyers. All I know is the police admitted during my arraignment to shooting both my service dogs to death while I was in front of the judge to try to make me lose control. The police had, the police had no warrant to remove the dogs, and animal control was not present during their murder. Also, the local police had no jurisdiction over service animals. They are federally protected, and killing them is a federal crime, as well as a state crime. Three, the police removed my children from my home and gave them to their strangler. The children's mother is on the Michigan Central Registry for Child Strangulation. With full knowledge of this, the chief and his minions gave my children to their mother. During the few days she had the children, my son, Bailel, was strangled by her boyfriend. Police reports and a case with CPS had been opened. What the police did is a blatant child endangerment. Four, I was charged with cruelty to animals as some kind of sick joke. The police said one of the service dogs they brutally murdered was a little skinny. Five, the police lied to the judge and tried to make me seem like a joker from Batman, telling the judge I was going to do crazy stuff. They got the judge to charge me seven hundred, seven thousand five hundred dollars to get released on bond. This was a blatant attempt to stop me from speaking to city council. A seven thousand five hundred dollar bond, and the only new charge over me was animal cruelty for a service dog they brutally shot to death along with her brother. Six, knowing that my children and myself had experienced horrific trauma, the police chief and his minions conspired to push me over the edge mentally to commit violence. When this failed, they attempted to set me up so no one would ever know about their racial terrorism. At the present time, my children and myself are shut up inside of our home, afraid for our lives. We know that Madison Heights Police Department murdered our service animals in an attempt to silence us. I fear they will shoot one of my children next. In short, the police tried to destroy my entire life simply for reporting to the city council the racism, racism I have endured while living in Madison Heights for the last ten months. They even went so far as refusing me medical attention for my heart attacks and legal disabilities. The killing of service dogs can be considered a serious offense, often carrying more severe penalties than the killing of a non-service dog. The service, the specific crime and its severity can depend on the jurisdiction, but here are some common charges that may apply."
Ms. Robinson, is this almost?
I have another page and a half, two pages.
Okay, so I'm going to say finish that one page, and then the public comment for this is done. It's, it's over the three minutes.
Okay. The, okay. One, animal cruelty. Many jurisdictions have specific laws against animal cruelty, which include the intentional killing of animals. The penalties for animal cruelty can range from fines to imprisonment. Two, destruction of property. Service dogs are considered the property of their owners. Destroying or damaging someone else's property, especially if done maliciously, can be a criminal offense. Three, interference with the service animal. Many jurisdictions have laws that specifically protect service animals. Killing or harming service animals can result in additional charges and more severe penalties. Four, aggravated animal cruelty. In some places, the killing of an animal, especially a service animal, might be classified under aggravated animal cruelty due to the sensitivity of the act and the special status of the animal. Five, hate crimes or civil rights violations. If the killing of a service dog is linked to discrimination against the owner, base, or race, or disability, it may be prosecuted as a hate crime or a civil rights violation. Six, violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA. In the United States, service animals are protected under the ADA. Harming a service animal could be seen as interfering with the rights of a disabled person, leading to additional legal consequences.
Thank you. So, the entirety of this, because there are a few more pages, and they have gone well over the three minutes, the entirety of this will be recorded in the minutes. All right, thank you. And I have closed meeting to the public, so we are going to move on to the consent agenda. I believe the one item is being pulled, so we have the original three. So, number four, from the Director of Public Services, purchase of radar signs. Director of Public Services, number five, budget of replacement of tire machinery. And then number six, the city council regular meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
All right, support.
Thank you. Motion is made, made and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a point that it does stay here, purchase of radar signs, but I just wanna inform the public that these are only radar signs that are taking your radar, but the police are not using them to enforce any, any radar or speeding tickets. They're not, you know, cameras are not on them or anything else like that, just, you know?
Just for information.
Just for information of what your speed is.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, so, yes?
I just want to say that I'm extremely happy with purchasing the radar signs. I've probably pushed Melissa, Ms. Marsh, a little bit more than she wanted to be pushed on that. We did, I'm glad we ended up using the company that was approved by our contract, but it was also the company that we met in Lansing at one of the education training sessions. The mayor and I and Ms. Marsh attended. And I'm extremely from a, from a school liaison, public safety, traffic safety, school safety, extremely thrilled that we're gonna be putting this up. And as Councilman Fleming said, they're just an awareness, they're not gonna send you to jail, but please, please, when they come on, if you're speeding, slow down. You're nearing a school. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nope. All right, motion carries. And then we have item six A, which was the legal opinion. May I get a motion to approve that? Perhaps a lawyer?
Your Honor, the motion, the motion would be to adopt the recommendation of special MMRMA legal counsel made in closed session relating to the Darniel Williams versus Madison Heights case.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor, motion to approve is stated by our city attorney.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nope. Motion carries. And then we have reports. First up is the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Grant for the Rosie's Park pickleball courts.
Oakland County Parks and Recreation has awarded the City of Madison Heights a park development grant for the creation of pickleball courts at Rosie's Park in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. The total project is budgeted not to exceed three hundred and fifty-one thousand. The city's match of two hundred and seventy-six will come from allocated Parks and Recreation budget available due to other grant funding and the special project match that is added to the budget every year by Councilman Bliss. We are working with Frank Riewell and Sons for the final cost of the contract of these courts as designed. However, the staff is committed to completing this with or with, within or under the three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar budget. Final approval of the construction project will require council approval at a future council meeting. Staff and I request that city council approve and accept the seventy-five thousand dollar grant from Oakland County Parks and Recreation and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the grant from Oakland County Parks and Recreation and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I will support.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion among council?
Yeah, Your Honor, I, you know, I think that we've, we've heard some valid concerns about our parks today. However, at the same time, I don't, I see no reason all of them can't be addressed. I see this as like, just a part of addressing our part. It doesn't have to be the whole conversation. And so, that's why I feel comfortable moving forward, because I know that all of the concerns that were brought forward can be addressed, and we can also have utilized this grant, which takes away from the tax money that our residents spend. So I think we should move ahead with this, and at the same time, check into the concerns of our residents.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Yeah, I, I agree. So I, I like pickleball. I'm certainly not as good as, at it as some folks up here. But I, I think what is beneficial about it is it can be But I think what is beneficial about it is it can be a revenue stream. And so the courts can be rented, can be leveraged and used. I agree, though, we still have immense gaps on accessibility investments. We have gaps for park attractions for our seniors, things like game tables, additional benches, shade, things that are affordable. And then other, you know, attractions for small children, you know, I've, for a decade now, have been promoting a splash pad. I still think a splash pad would fit into the city and I think an investment like this shows that it's possible with the help and support of a grant. And so, you know, I will vote yes here, but I think as Council Wright noted, I think it has to be a, to be continued. I think this is a continued dialogue. We have been focused on improving our parks through grants and external investments for the last six or seven years. And I think we need to continue to pour some fuel on that fire, because there's a lot of things that are missing, that are needed. And a lot of them aren't, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. A lot of them are things that can be done for $5,000 or less. And so, you know, again, I support this and it will be revenue generating. Over time, we will get our entire investment back on these courts. And the maintenance for those courts should absolutely be covered from the ongoing revenue. But I think we need to continue to have these public discussions and public surveys to be able to understand the low-cost things or even the high-cost things that our residents want included in the city in addition to pickleball.
All right, thank you. Any other?
Your Honor. Yeah, I want, as Mayor Pro Tem Bliss said, there's been quite a few folks from conversations I've had with City Manager Marsh that are aware that we're considering this and want to come in and partner with us on running leagues and will help pay for the maintenance, if not pay for all of it. I don't remember all the details that Ms. Marsh shared with me, but it certainly would turn out to be a income generator for us. I actually got a chance to play with one of our city outings that we did and I had a great time. I had to use my cane, but, and I think County Clerk, City Clerk Rodman took it easy on me that game, but it was really a lot of fun and it was great to get out there and be doing something with all my physical capabilities that I've been challenged with over the last year. So I think it's a great investment and I know we've made a lot of ADA-type improvements over at Rosie's. I'm sure those will continue and I don't want to put the manager Marsh on the hot seat to tell us what's planned, but I'm sure there's some coming down the road. And the drinking fountain comments, oh wait, I'll save that for closing comments. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments specific to the pickleball courts?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just one thing I forgot, and this is important, because the last time that the city made an investment in something that was trending was the skate park. We did something very similar. We took down the existing basketball court area, which had tennis courts as well, and we put in a skate park. It wasn't maintained. It was let, I mean, it was effectively left to fail without the investment in it and it ultimately had to be torn down at a loss to the city. We had to give pieces of it to modern skates and, you know, I do understand that trends and things move and change, but I would just like to let the public know that that won't happen here. The ongoing investment will be prioritized as it has to be. We're not going to make a substantial investment like this and leave it sitting, derelict, and shutting it off to the residents as happened to the skate park years ago.
So I can elaborate on a few things, perhaps I should. So a side conversation that's going on with this is a partnership with the Southeast Michigan Pickleball Association, which runs to all of the pickleball courts in Royal Oak. They run leagues and tournaments out of there and we have been partnering with them on this. They are committed to helping us maintain these. They would be providing nets. They would be making sure that they run classes for our seniors and helping get utilization and participation from our residents specifically. I did do several Facebook posts for the community and got quite a bit of positive feedback, very limited negative, which is kind of rare. So that's good as well. And two, in the future, if this is just a fad, which it's the fastest growing sport in the world right at the moment, but I realize that might not always be the case. I'm sure back in the day, tennis might have been as well. This is something that easily can be converted into something else. It's just, it's not like a skate park. It's pretty much just a pad with lines painted. So you can paint tennis or basketball or whatever the thing is at the time there. And it also will have a fence that can be locked, which will prevent some of the, I guess, situations that we currently have at the park.
Thank you. Any other comments specific to pickleball, pickleball courts?
All right, so I will just make this statement. Yeah, it is the fastest growing sport in the country, but it's actually been around for about 60 years. 1965 is when it started. So yeah, I think that putting these in, and if we see that we're not getting the use that we were hoping, it is relatively easy to change it to something else, as Ms. Marsh indicated. So with that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who can't say nope, motion carries. We have report number eight, the Accelerated Tax Foreclosure Resolution for 2425.
The Certification of Abandoned Property for Accelerated Foreclosure Act allows a property with delinquent taxes and is certified abandoned by the local governing body to enter an accelerated foreclosure process in which the county treasurer's office can foreclose on a property one year earlier than the regular three-year foreclosure process. The annual election to accelerate a tax foreclosure process can be a useful tool to expedite the removal of abandoned property and to reduce blight. A resolution for certification of abandoned property for Accelerated Foreclosure Act is included and City Council has asked to consider tonight. Staff and I recommend that council approve the resolution for the certification of abandoned property for Accelerated Forfeiture Act. And you'll see a good example of this later on our agenda, which is 27804 Groveland, which is a property that I was approached about almost five years ago as abandoned and in need of demolition. And this has been a long trying process. It is now going through the tax foreclosure process, which you'll see a little bit later on the agenda. So had we had this in place, then we could have helped that situation a year ago.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that council approve the resolution for certification of abandoned property for Accelerated Forfeiture Act.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So one of the folks that does around and makes their way to our meetings is our current Oakland County Treasurer, Robert Wittenberg. He is a fantastic man at that job. He does not want to take anyone's home. He does not want to forfeit, allow, help, he does not want to cause anyone to have to forfeit their home or go through a forfeiture. In fact, the Oakland County Treasurers want to do the opposite. And so this process is a good process, because it helps us to get rid of blight, but also it's comforting to know that the folks who are over the department that handles those forfeitures does not want to kick our residents out of their home. And so I feel comfortable moving forward with this process because of those two things, because of Oakland County Treasurer and Robert Wittenberg, and because I know that this process will actually help our city in the long run.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion, comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. And then we have number nine, the resolution to modify medical marijuana facilities and adult-use marijuana establishments, the Green Zone map.
Per Section 7310 and 7410 of the city's business regulations and licensing ordinance contained within the code of ordinances, City Council may approve a resolution from time to time and publish a map of approved properties where marijuana medical facilities and adult-use marijuana facilities can be located. This map would be known as the Green Zone. These are allowable uses in the M1, M2 industrial districts per the city's business regulation ordinances related to marijuana. On June the 10th, City Council approved the rezoning of 1035 West 12 Mile Road from B3 General Business to M1 Lot Industrial for a marijuana facility. Therefore, the parcel should now be included in the city's published Green Zone map to allow the properties for the placement of a marijuana medical facility and adult-use marijuana establishments, so that the parcel can be combined with a neighboring parcel that is already located inside the said Green Zone. Both the subject parcel and the adjacent parcel must be within the approved Green Zone map prior to the parcel combination being approved. Therefore, staff and I recommend that City Council incorporate the parcel at 1035 West 12 Mile Road as an approved property within the city's Green Zone map.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt a resolution that modifies the Green Zone map as listed, merging the two properties and allowing it to still exist in the Green Zone.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have one question then, and that is, when we merge the properties, it doesn't automatically take over the other? Like it doesn't automatically come in? It's one parcel?
I have to put a mat on that, but I think you have to have the same zoning on both the properties, parcels, before you can combine them.
We did that, I thought.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry, I thought we went through this already, so that we...
Oh, we haven't revised the actual Green Zone map. We did rezone the property from B3 to M1. But just because we changed it to M1 did not automatically make that parcel turn green. So we have to redo the map and color green over a little bit to get this parcel in.
Okay, so basically, half of the parcel is in the Green Zone and half of it is not?
That's correct. They're both appropriately zoned now, but the Green Zone map, which is outside of the zoning ordinance, would need to be updated to include the left side of the parcel, so that it's all in the Green Zone.
All right, thank you for that clarification. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. And next up, we have bid award purchases, number 10 from the Director of Public Services, the scheduled replacement of loader number 488.
The approved 2025 budget includes a scheduled replacement of loader 488, a 2003 Volvo L30B front-end loader with a bucket, fork, and broom funded through the Parks Division. The current loader will be replacing a 21-year-old, extremely poor-conditioned piece of equipment. The last three loaders purchased have been Volvo, due to being highly favored in the demonstrations and operations, as well as approving track record and providing strong service with minimal maintenance and downtime. Having all the machines provided with the same maker also helps streamline the parts and service inventory, as well as providing familiarity with our operators who use the machines. Therefore, we are requesting that the loader and attachments be purchased through a competitive deal with My Deal Bid through the State of Michigan from Alta Equipment, which is the area Volvo dealer. Based on this information, staff requests that council approve the purchase of one Volvo L30 GS front-end loader with identified options from Alta Equipment in Burton, Michigan, through the My Deal Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for the total equipment cost of Funds are budgeted and available for the scheduled replacement and purchase.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that council approve the purchase of one Volvo L30 GS front-end loader with identified options from Alta Equipment of Burton, Michigan, through the My Deal Cooperative Purchasing Contract, number 2400000159, for a total equipped cost of $160,898. Funds are budgeted and available for this scheduled replacement and purchase.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I think it was, it should have had three more zeros. But...
I'm not going to repeat.
I was counting on my hands, sorry.
Yeah, Your Honor, I think we've been doing a great job over the last decade in replacing equipment ahead of time before it's an emergency and we end up overpaying for it. So I want to thank our DPS staff for ensuring that we're able to do that. I will ask, so we have a lot of really cool equipment. It'd be great to be able to do a public demonstration at a major event sometime. I think that would be really, really cool. I don't think a lot of people understand all of the equipment that goes into maintaining this city, and I think that'd be really cool. Whether it's virtually or in person or something, putting some videos up on social media, I think would be helpful, because there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes to ensure that our residents have, you know, safe roads and a high quality of life here. And it's equipment like this that allows your staff to be able to do it. So it'd be great to show them a little bit more.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Yes?
So a couple of points, as Mayor Pro Tem Bliss mentioned, the fantastic job of staying out ahead, and I wanted to also mention that this is yet another purchase that was under budget. So kudos to the folks that are staying on top of these things and making sure we're getting stuff replaced without having to do it under non-favorable conditions. And maybe you could do that demo building a splash pad or something like that. Sorry, I was just making a comment there. But at Trick or Treat, Truck or Treat, I'm sorry, Trek or Treat, we did have some of those trucks out there, so Sean will get more of those out there next year for this year's event. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. And then number 11 is also Director of Public Services, the Edison Park Parking Lot Paving.
The square year 2025 budget includes funding carried forward for the paving of Edison Park Parking Lot, which is currently composed of gravel. Additional funding has been obtained through the city's CDBG funding. The paving of this parking lot represents a key step in improving ADA accessibility at this park. Patrons with limited mobility will now be able to park and transport onto the adjacent sidewalk network to the ADA-accessible playscape and other amenities in the park. Due to the various conditions of the CDBG funding, including Davis Bacon wage requirements, a bid for the project was prepared by staff in the city's consulting engineering firm, Norick and House. Five sealed bids were received by the deadline, and upon tabulation, Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township was a low bidder. Delicio has been the city's concrete provider for many years on the major and local sectional projects and R3 road construction. They have proven to be responsive and a qualified firm, and their work is of consistently high quality. Between CDBG funds and programmed expenses, funding is currently budgeted and available to cover this bid and the necessary construction oversight. Therefore, staff and I concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and recommend that council award the bid for the Edison Park Parking Lot paving project to Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township for $112,331.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I'll take this one, although there's no zeros. I move that we award the bid for the Edison Park Lot, Parking Lot paving project to Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township for a total amount of $112,331.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Again, under budget.
Under budget.
Well-approved.
All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. And then we have number 12, the parcel redevelopment program for 2024.
As part of the adopted 2019 goal plan, the city implemented a tax foreclosure purchase-sell redevelopment program. This initiative has led to the immediate cleanup of property exteriors, ongoing maintenance, guaranteed code compliance renovations, and the sale of residential properties to owner occupants. Additionally, it provided immediately tax benefits from renovated structures, enhanced property appraisals for the neighboring area, and reduced the potential future single-family rental or vacant properties. In July of 2018, the city council approved the first year of this tax foreclosure redevelopment program. Since then, we have worked with developers to successfully renovate 22 foreclosed properties through this program. This program has proven to be beneficial to the city, neighborhood, and to future homeowners. This year, the city is opting to purchase only one foreclosed property eligible for this program, which is located at 27804 Groveland Street. This program, this property is currently vacant, condemned... Street. This program, this property is currently vacant, condemned, and slated for demolition. As a result, Oakland County equalization has reassessed this parcel at $30,000. Using this information, we developed and issued a request for proposal, receiving submissions from two companies. Only one company, DMC Consultants, met our specific requirements to, one, demolish the structure on the parcel within 30 days of ownership, and, two, build a new residential building on this parcel. DMC Consultants will pay $30,000 for the property plus $1,575 in administrative fees to the city upon closing. Based on the condition of the parcel to be purchased, the proposal submitted in response to this year's RFP and the proven success of this program, I recommend that city council take the following two actions. Number one, approve the purchase of 27804 Groveland for the $30,000 from the Oakland County through the tax foreclosure process. According to our charter 12.1, the purchase of this property will require five affirmative votes. Number two, award the parcel redevelopment program to DMC Consultants and the subsequent sale of 27804 Groveland by approving the contract and authorizing the city manager and clerk to sign on behalf of the city. I did have a representative from DMC here, but I don't, I think he left. I don't see him anymore. So I will attempt to answer your questions.
All right, thank you. What is-
What?
He just left.
I think, I think it was a gentleman who just left. I don't know. Someone who just leave. Can I get a motion from council?
Your honor, I move we approve the purchase of 27804 Groveland, parcel 24, or 2513302005 for $30,000 from Oakland County through the tax foreclosure process.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your honor, support.
Thank you. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
We do have a question. Do you know the previous properties that we've sold and they've been redeveloped, what is the median price that they've been sold for? Do we know that?
Oh, no, not off the top of my head.
Okay. Can you bring that maybe to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Your honor, to, to counselors' right, comments earlier about foreclosures, my understanding is, is, you know, we're not speeding up the foreclosure process to kick you out of your home. That's not the intent. And like this property, it's verified that it's vacant, the owner has left. It's, it's, it speeds that process up on how quickly we can do something with those type of properties. So, and not kicking folk out of their home, that's not what the Oakland County or we're in the business of trying to do. They try and resolve that as, as best they can, but if the property becomes vacant, then it gives us an opportunity to act on it sooner.
Yes, and, and this specific property is condemned, so no one can live there. We can't invite a family to live there.
Well, and that accelerated foreclosure process is only for the upcoming future. It didn't apply to this property. I just used, this is a great example of, had we adopted that last year, we could have expedited this process. The residents in that neighborhood have really been waiting on, if you're familiar with the project, that definitely needs to be taken care of. And in lieu of going through this process and actually selling it to a developer, the city would be carrying the burden to demo that property and then have to try to lean the demolition cost back on that residential parcel that would be vacant that would then hinder somebody else from buying it to build new there. So this is a win-win for the city and the neighborhood and the developer.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say nope. Motion carries. And that concludes our regular meeting. Oh, I apologize. I jumped ahead there. Okay, can I get the second motion from council, please?
Your honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to award the parcel development program to DMC Consultants, Inc., and the subsequent sale of 27804 Groveland by approving the contract and authorizing the city manager and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is, is there support?
Your honor?
Yes. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say nope. Motion carries. And that concludes the regular meeting. I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll, I'll keep it brief. I, I had some comments I wanted to make, but I'm going to hold on to them. But I hope everyone had a good Fourth of July weekend, and a certain somebody who had a birthday, I hope they celebrated and had some fun and took some downtime on their birthday, which is great. Last council meeting, we talked about training budget for council. I have some comments on that that I'll discuss a little bit later in, in our meetings, but I'm, I'm certainly a supporter of trying to get education up here. I want to be educated trying to serve the city, so I'm a supporter of that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor, two things tonight. The first, tonight was the first time it occurred to me. So we had made the change during the pandemic to allow for email comments to be read at meetings. And it was a really great change there. We continued to allow that instead of forcing people who often, you know, nowadays are even working two jobs and can't be able to make it out, to enable them to speak and provide their input to council on public record. What occurred to me tonight was we don't have a limit like we do in person. There's that time-based limit in person, but we should have a formalized character limit for email submissions, or if we want to do it through a form, or, or whatever that would be. I, I don't know whether or not, you know, we, we have to go through council to adopt the policy, or staff could do it administratively. But it would be nice, before we get a submission of several pages that a resident expects us to read into the record, to be very clear that only a certain amount of that would be eligible, just so we can set those clear expectations with our residents. I know they'll all be included in the record, but I just want to make sure that we amend that going forward because we do get a consistent amount of emails coming in now. I don't see that changing anytime soon, so putting in some sort of requirements, I think, would be a good thing. The second thing I have tonight is really just a shout out and a thank you to our state representative, Mike McFall. A lot of times up here, you'll hear me say things when we're passing a resolution to send to somebody, why don't council members just pick up the phone and advocate themselves on behalf of the residents? And so I had, you know, as many people know, I, you know, I'm on the Arts Board. I, I help put on Trail Tunes with a great committee, and I'm a big fan of live music and concerts. And many residents had mentioned, you know, struggling to be able to afford to pay for concerts nowadays. The, the rising costs, a lot of them are tied to bots that are buying up these tickets and then automatically putting them up for resale for significant price hike. And so I, I brought that to our state representative. There was a law that was passed in Arizona that allowed them to legislate that from a state level. And when I brought it to Rep. McFall, he immediately got to work on it, found a bipartisan sponsor, and I believe it is now passed through committee. I think they're, they're quietly calling it the, the Taylor Swift bill. But that is, to me, a perfect example of, A, a representative who stays connected and listens to the concerns of the community, no matter how weird and random they might sound. If people are struggling to pay for concert tickets, they couldn't buy the Taylor Swift tickets because bots bought them all up. I think it's important. And it also shows what can happen if local government and higher government can communicate and have a great relationship, and if that higher government takes that feedback and immediately jumps into a bipartisan approach to getting something done. So hats off to State Representative Mike McFall, and hopefully that will fully pass, and they'll be able to enforce eliminating those bots from effectively scalping these tickets at prices that put it outside of most families and Madisonites' ability to buy them. That's it for tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Stray?
Yeah, I, I believe, sorry, you kind of tripped me up. Mike McFall is doing fantastic work for us. I know he's helping with some projects with our police station and things like that. I don't know to what extent we-
$500,000 to the extent.
Didn't know to what extent we could talk about it, but-
It's going to be in the newspaper, so you can-
Okay. Mike McFall was able to push through $500,000 towards the HVAC system in our police station, and I think that more directly impacts our community, and I'm very happy to see him doing things like that in our community. I also wanted to, just to circle back, Mayor Pro Tim Bliss made a fantastic point, and it's a conversation that Sean and I had already had to show off some of those cool equipments at our upcoming Rev in the Heights event. So we're, we're doing a car show and a cooking competition on September 14th, and we had invited DPS to show off some of their cool vehicles as well, in addition to the fire station. Fire Station 1 will be having that open house. So it's going to be a fantastic event, and we seem to be gathering a lot of momentum very quickly. I know the police station, they have a car called a Diplomat, which is an old-school Hill Street Blues cop car. So I want to encourage people to get involved. Right now, we're looking for sponsors for awards, so there's going to be awards for the car show and for the cooking competition. So including an award I mentioned before, like the Mayor's Choice Award. So it should be fun. You know, but funny enough, we're called the Motor City, and people here like cars, so it should be a fun event for the entire community. And so I want to encourage everyone to come out to that and to participate. Bring out your cars, bring out your family. There'll be an event for kids to participate, and we're getting a lot of traction. The other thing I wanted to do, the gentleman from Priority left, but I wanted to thank him for coming out because he's stepping, I'm sure he's doing that in every community, and he's probably getting like blasted by councils everywhere he goes. So I want to, hopefully I wasn't too mean when I spoke to him, but I know a lot of folks on my block and around the area who are, are just frustrated and confused. So thank him for coming out. I hope he keeps his word and comes back at least twice a year. And thank you to Doug Jones, who has been a part of our community, who has served us, who, you know, I think it's frustrating when you come home and your trash didn't get picked up, but it's also cool when you have someone who has your back and who picks up your trash. I've literally seen, he's come to my house personally, taking the trash out of my can and throwing it into the back of a pickup truck, which to me was what you call fantastic customer service. Along the lines, just to circle back to DPS, I want to say kudos for Festival in the Park. It was fantastic. It was a great job to the, you and the gang who put that on. While I was there, I had, just a running in by coincidence, running into our former Sergeant Gregory Hart, I'm going to mess his name up, so somebody-
Hartunian.
Hartunian. Sergeant Gregory Hartunian. He was at the event. And as you guys might remember, he had a horrific accident in Detroit. It was on the news, and some of the, the feedback we were getting is that it didn't look good. But when I saw him, he was standing up, he was walking. He wasn't at 100% by any means, but I saw him and I just shook his hand, and he was with his family. But one of the things that he had mentioned to me is wanting to have the first responders and the law enforcement and DPD recognized by their city council. And I thought that that was awesome. And I said, we can see what we can do to help you, but I definitely, absolutely will thank them for taking care of one of our guys and helping him out in his time of need, because you never know when it'll be your time of need. So I want to wish him well. I'm glad to see he was walking around and, and doing better. And I wish him a speedy recovery. But thank you to those first responders and officers in DPD for doing a fantastic job and taking care of one of Madison Heights. Two other things I just want to mention is the ADA Pride Event. We talked about disability and this being Disability Pride Month, and so there's an event on the 13th. It's going to be at Civic Center Park. Go check it out. Disability Pride is just celebrating people and them living their lives. There's going to be some art, music, things of that nature. If Councilor Barbour was here, I know she'd talk about it. It's an event between the Arts Board and HREC, so it should be fantastic. And, you know, finally, just, I will say, Rev in the Heights, get ready. We're going to have some cars, and we're going to have some fun. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything?
No comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, anything from the city mayor?
No comment.
Parks Office?
Last Friday, we sent out our absentee ballots. So if you didn't get your absentee ballot, please call our office, and we can track where it is currently. If you did not request an absentee ballot and you would like one, you can go online and fill out an online application. You can call our office, and we can send you an application. You can come in in person, or you can, or you can go on the Secretary of State's website, and that will get directly forwarded to us. The election, I want to remind everybody, is a primary election. That means you can only vote for one, even though both parties appear on the ballot, you can only vote for one party. So if you're going to vote on the Democratic side, you cannot vote on the Republican side. If you want to vote on the Republican side, you cannot vote on the Democratic side. That will nullify your vote in those partisan races. Please choose one column to vote in, and then also vote the nonpartisan section. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
All right, no comments.
All right, I want to thank everybody who came out this evening for, for your comments. And I'm wondering if we can do some kind of moratorium on auto-related businesses. There seem to be a lot of businesses that want to come here that are gas stations and car washes, and I'm wondering if there's a way we can just do a moratorium on them. You know, we heard from Mr. Gunn, who's been here for 20 years. He owns the, he owns a wash point on John R., and I know he purchased the one on Dequinder a few years ago. But we've got three new car washes that are coming. And then the gas stations, Costco is increasing the number of gas pumps they have. We just had another new one, which we approved a few years ago. I think it was four years ago we approved it. That was finally built at tenant Dequinder. But if we can put some kind of moratorium on and just let that sort of, let, let our new ordinances take effect, let, you know, just see what we can, what other kind of businesses we can bring in that aren't so auto-centric. The next meeting we have is Monday, July 22nd, and the time is 9:33. We are adjourned. Good night.